Good evening. I'd like to welcome you all to the, excuse me, Tuesday, February 16th Vista Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Carroll, will you lead us in the pledge?
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Charlie, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Carroll?
Here.
Chairman Kramer?
Here.
Commissioner Fleming?
Here.
Commissioner Garretson?
Present.
Commissioner Jackal is not here tonight yet. Commissioner Rosler?
Here.
Commissioner Looney.
Here.
And Student Commissioner Rudabush is not in, but Carla Acevedo? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, before you, are the minutes from our January 19th meeting. Are there any changes to those minutes? If not, can we entertain a motion? Commissioner Fleming? Commissioner Rosler?
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Carroll, any comments or second? Okay, very good. All right. Mr. Rosler, are there any agenda changes for this evening's meeting?
No, Madam Chair.
Oh, sorry. We need to call the vote. Thank you so much. Let the record show that the minutes from the January 19th meeting passed unanimously with Commissioner Jackal not here to vote. Thank you. Okay, now we have no event, agenda changes. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on anything that is other than what's on this evening's agenda? Okay, seeing none. Before we start, Commissioner Fleming, is there something you would like to say?
Yes, I am running for City Council and there is a, I've received a donation to my campaign from the people who are presenting the proposal this evening in the early review. It is a, an amount that is exactly on the limit of, it's just, it's below the limit of having to report and recuse myself, however, it is right there. And to prevent any chance of impropriety, while I regret not being able to fulfill my duties as a planning commissioner this evening, I am going to re-recuse myself from this, this evening.
Mr. Rosler, would you like to start us off then for this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Staff has received a proposal to develop 137 townhomes on approximately 15.9 acres, located southeast of the intersection of East Vista Way and Foothill Drive. The site is locally known as Delphi Corner, as it's the site of the former Delphi residents. The site is currently vacant land. Here's an aerial photograph of the site. Again, it's 15.9 acres. The site maintains three legal lots and it's currently vacant land. The properties to the north across Foothill Drive are developed with an integrated shopping center as well as the Foothill Oak Elementary School. The properties to the south are developed with single-family residences. Properties to the west across East Vista Way are developed with a retail shopping center as well as a vacant automobile dealership. Properties to the east are developed with single-family homes. The general plan land use designation for the site is medium-density residential. The medium-density residential land use designation would allow for up to 10 dwelling units per acre. The subject site is located within the East Vista-Foothill Drive opportunity area within the general plan. The property maintains a zoning designation of vineyard-specific plan. The vineyard-specific plan would allow up to 6.6 dwelling units per acre. The vineyard-specific plan was approved in January of 2007. The plan would allow for the development of 59 single-family homes on approximately 11.8 acres, as well as 46 live-work townhomes on approximately 4.1 acres. The proposed project would require a specific plan amendment, site development plan, as well as a tentative subdivision map. The proposal includes a development of 137 townhomes within 24 separate buildings. The proposed density would be 8.6 dwelling units per acre. The project includes two- and three-story townhomes with garages at a maximum height of 38 feet. The project has been designed to provide a total of 24 two-bedroom units, 85 three-bedroom units, as well as 28 four-bedroom units. The 15.9 acre site would be developed with 24 buildings with a range of four to seven townhomes per building. The project has been designed to provide a total of 417 parking spaces, which exceeds the citywide multifamily residential parking standards by four spaces. The project has been designed to provide approximately 115,000 square feet of open space within the development, which would include a pool area, spa, fire pits, barbecues, as well as a shade pavilion area. Architecturally, the proposed development would maintain a Mediterranean-style theme. The proposed development has been designed to provide two-story units along the southerly and easterly edge of the development, with three-story units towards the rear of the site. Architectural enhancements and exterior finishes include tile roofs, stucco exterior finishes, corbeled accents, inset balconies, window shutters, as well as metal pot shelves. This is an elevation of the three-story product that's located towards the rear of the site. The elevations here are the two-story units that would be adjacent to Foothill Drive as well as East Vista Way. Again, the project would maintain two-, three-, and four-bedroom units ranging from 1,000, or, excuse me, 1,261 square feet to 2,021 square feet. With that, staff is requesting the Planning Commission provide comments to the applicant related to the architecture and design of the project. At this time, the developer is here to provide you with a thorough presentation in regards to the architectural design of the project, as well as the layout of the site plan. With that, that concludes staff's report, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Are there any questions? Thank you.
Michael, on the, on the site plan, the main entrance is still off of Foothill Drive, and it appears that there's emergency access on East Vista Way. Is, was that a requirement of the city, or the traffic engineer? When they were here before, we made comments about a right turn in, right turn out access there. Has the city staff precluded that and required this to be an emergency access, I guess is the question?
At this point, the city's traffic engineer has reviewed the preliminary plan, and seeing that East Vista Way is a primary arterial, it's discouraged that we would, we would do a larger curd pet and, and provide that right-in, right-out movements. So at this point, it wouldn't be something that the city's traffic engineer would support.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
Mr. Rosler, what about a traffic study? Will one be done? And I'm thinking specifically on Foothill at the time schools let out, versus somebody trying to make a left turn out of this property, because there's only one way in and one way out. So if somebody wanted to make a left turn out of Foothill during, let's say, three to four, it would be almost impossible.
At this point, the traffic engineer is going to require a signalized intersection at the entrance of the site, number one. Number two, yes, during the formal environmental review process, a traffic analysis would be performed for a project of this size.
And this entrance, would that be directly across from the entrance to the shopping center?
Actually, that, the entrance that they're showing on their site plan is actually located east of the entrance to the shopping center.
So the light would be at this entrance and not at the two entrances to the shopping center?
That's correct. Actually, if that, it was located there, it'd be closer to the intersection of Foothill and East Vista Way, in order to provide the stacking and so forth, and it being in close proximity of that, that intersection, it would be preferred to be pulled farther away from that intersection, and most likely at this location here.
And final question relates to pedestrian circulation, specifically sidewalk safety within the facility. It was kind of unclear to me where the sidewalks were within the, the complex.
The, the site plan that they submitted was a, kind of a schematic approach, I guess, to a site plan. It wasn't a hard line, but if you can see here, they have a trail, it's called a bluff trail, along the edge of the project, that would provide connection from the units to the main open-space area. And also, there's a, a ramp slash stairway that goes directly to the corner of Foothill and East Vista Way. Now, within the development, the courtyard areas provide pedestrian walkways as well that links to a walkway system along the edge of the parking lot area, which connects the units to the parking lot, as well as to the three common open-space areas.
So somebody could walk on sidewalks within the complex, as opposed to just walking on the driveway?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you. Mr. Rosler, are these being, is this being mapped as condominium project, or are these rental units?
This is a condominium project.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Looney, please.
One question regarding traffic. Question regarding traffic. As I exit the property, rather than turning to the left on Foothill, if I chose to go right and then turn right on Oak to swing down to that other intersection where there's a light, has, will the traffic study include the increase of vehicles on Oak as it is now, or without any street widening being proposed for Oak?
I guess at this point, I didn't see the original, the original scope of work of the original traffic study, so I really can't make a comment on that. When they formally submit their application, we'll be forwarding it to our environmental consultant, and then at that point, they'll be, the consultant will prepare a scope of work for that, for that study. But unfortunately, I don't have that information at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We're ready for the applicant, if you'd like to make your presentation.
Testing. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for that presentation. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and consideration this evening. My name is Oscar Uringa, I'm with Shop Off Realty Investments. I represent the owner, ownership, and the applicant on this project. With us tonight, I also want to introduce our design team, in the event that there's any questions on any specific topics, we've invited them to come down. So we've got our planning staff, civil engineer, landscape architect, and the architects with us. You know where the project is, so I'm going to skip that. The historic context of the site is really important to us. We've been processing for some time and collaborating with San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians. In terms of history of the site, they occupy this entire region, and it's important to remember their relationship to the land. There are also some culturally significant resources on this property that we should keep in mind as we evaluate design. Also, in times, in terms of history, in more recent history, this is known as the Delphi Corner. It's actually one of multiple Delphi Corners, as you can see on the bottom-left-hand photo. I just want to read this really quickly. Bernard Delphi came to Vista in 1873. He homesteaded the land, and it wasn't until his nephew, Jules Jacques Delphi, who was born in Rockford, Southern Mediterranean, France, joined him in 1879, thus the sign. They brought with them Mediterranean architecture, wine-making, you know, a different culture, and they homesteaded this area. On the top right-hand corner there, that's Maria Delphi, who, interestingly enough, lived to be 105. Top left there, that's a photo of the original, actually, not the original, the second Delphi home, which we used for inspiration in some of our architectural elements. The bottom right is a photo from the hill looking north of the original home, which had more of a plantation, kind of an architecture. This is a photo of 1946, which is really a fascinating, note that Foothill Drive used to kind of be what today it looks like, a private driveway, and orchards and vineyards everywhere. Really fascinating history here. 2007, the height of the last economic cycle, the city approved the vineyard-specific plan. Our planner, Mike Howes, was involved in that effort. If we have any project, questions about that, he's here. We're amending that specific plan, so this is a point of reference for us as we move forward. Staff mentioned a number of units. One thing that I think is really interesting in terms of their approach to design, is they graded the entire site, provided two terraces, a 16-foot setback on Foothill Drive, and immediately three-story elements, lots of mass and walls on kind of what I call the outer interface with the public, with the public. Hopefully, what you see tonight is a much more thoughtful approach to grading and site design. This is the East Foothill, I'm sorry, East Vista Way section. Similarly, lots of mass and height right against the street. They did that in part because it was live-work units, and they wanted to make themselves prominent. They wanted big signage, "Come shop here. We don't want to compete with commercial across the street. We want to support them." More recently, I've been involved, on our previous proposal, was the Enclave at Delp, Enclave at Vineyards project. It was a 200-unit apartment project. I only mention it briefly because throughout that process, we did a lot of community outreach. We held many community meetings at the French bakery across the street. We sent mailers out, not just to our minimum notification radiuses, but to everyone within Oak Drive multiple times. We went through this process previously, and we learned a lot. Here's what we heard. "Please, please, please, no more apartments. We heard you loud and clear. After, after processing for some two-and-a-half, three years, we made the painful decision to walk away from that proposal. We also heard no general plan amendments. We heard that staff had dedicated an incredible amount of time to that document, and that is your constitution, so we do not propose to amend it today. Also, I've got a lot of pushback on density bonuses and the state coming down interfering with local land use decisions. We are not going to propose a density bonus." And more recently, we've heard about traffic issues and parking. We heard, "Do not skip on parking." So here's a little bit of a preview of what we're proposing tonight. Eighty percent, 86% of the allowable density were well below the ceiling. All ownership units, each having their own two-car garage with direct access. We exceed the RM parking requirements, which is an enormous burden on a project. We do that kind of reluctantly. It's a lot of parking, it's a lot of imperious surface, a lot of cost. It makes the project harder from a design standpoint. The balance of softscape to hardscape is, in my opinion, thrown off, but you have your standards, we're meeting, actually, we're exceeding them. In terms of common open space, you'll see in the slides forthcoming here, we're providing more than double the required common open space, and we have some opportunities there. We'd love your feedback on how we can program those spaces accordingly. In terms of, again, kind of the interface with the public space, we're going to be improving our entire frontage, which is an enormous cost, because we have so much of it, all the way down from our southern property lawn on East Vista Way, all the way up and around the corner. And in fact, one of the city council members asked us if we could continue our sidewalk all the way east to Oak. We're looking into that now, and I think we'll be able to provide that connection for the school kids. That was a, that was a feature that was in our last proposal, and it seems only right that we preserve it with this one. Lastly, and this is kind of my own little pet project, I just want to touch on this. And again, in terms of commemorating history of the site, I think there's an enormous opportunity to do some art in public places. We've noticed you like art in public places, and I introduced myself to the Arts Commission a few weeks ago. I don't know what this means quite yet, it's not necessarily a proposal quite yet. I'm looking to get their help on how we can kind of program something into my entitlements. But I think, instead of, you know, retaining walls, maybe we break that up with panels, or a mosaic, or a mural. My only requirement is that it commemorates the history of the Delphies. So I think that's an opportunity, again, maybe one where you can solicit, we can solicit some of your input. Really quick, existing conditions, you know the site, I'm sure you've driven by it a million times. Topography's generally sloping hills from the southeast to the northwest. We've had a lot of problems with vagrants. We fenced the property recently, we had a lot of graffiti, we've pressure-washed the rocks, to, in part to make friends with the Native Americans and kind of honor that resource. And this is where I'm going to pass it off to our actual design team, that can speak to what they've put forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Denise Ashton. I'm a senior principal in, of the planning studio. So I do the plan, you're going to hear from another one of us who does the architecture. I do get to, I do get to speak to this exhibit, and part of that is, the previous slide showed you what it looks like, and this is what we think it can look like. Very attractive two- and three-story townhomes that will be a, a community that we think you'll be very proud of, and will speak highly for Vista. The site plan, we've all talked about it, 137, oh, I do have my little thing here. Oh, I bet this is a, okay, no, sorry. Get my tools here. 137 homes we have out here. We do have a mix of two- and three-story townhomes. So these homes that are along the perimeter, this for, for orientation, East Vista Way, Foothill Drive, two- and three-story townhomes along the perimeter of the edge, as you noted from Oscar's speech, that he talked about how close the original entitlement was, the buildings were very close to the road. We've purposefully set them back and put two-story edge homes, the smaller edge of the home, along the street. We were very thoughtful in that regard. There was conversation about the mass of a building, and because there is a slope along this edge, we didn't really want to have the face of the building all along the perimeter. So we were very thoughtful in putting the smaller portion of the building along the public edge. It has lots of opportunity that allows us to have the bluff-top trail, it allows us to have entry courts, softens this edge both from the public view outside and also from the inside. On the back part of the community are the full three-story townhomes, and they are interconnected. The, it was a very good question about the sidewalks you asked. We do have that perimeter bluff-top trail. We do have a sidewalk along the street, as Mike mentioned, and along both sides of the street. And you'll notice, all these entry corridors connect to that sidewalk. We, we did have the idea to have the heart of this community as the central recreation area. This central recreation area is explosive in terms of a community this size. It's large and also softened from the public view, because you are having this break in the buildings. This community is also connected by this long circuitous ramp or stairs, if you're so inclined to make the trek, down to the corner to the commercial area. The open space has the one central amenity, but we also have many parks, for lack of a better term, that happen throughout the community, that we feel connected with the sidewalk system trail. It has, the, the idea would be that there's a different look and feel to this, this connectivity. We do have the one entry gated entry. It is off of Foothill. It will be grand, and, and you'll, you know, there's grade on this site, so you'll come up the hill to the, to the turnaround, and that's where the gate will happen. And we do have an emergency vehicle access that happens on the south side against East Vista Way. This is just a little explanation of how that grade works. And we did take, this is a cross-section of how we're, the dash is existing terrain. We are grading the site, lowering the pad to 50 feet. What that allows us to do is to take these three-story townhomes that are 35 feet in nature, and essentially nestle them up in the hillside. That would be away from the view shed from those homes that are up the hill. We, we like the approach, we think it makes more sense. As Oscar mentioned, we're offering double the required open space. These darker green areas are the more active or programmed, and we'd love to have some input at some point in time during this process about how we could program that. We have our ideas of our own. That more lime green shows you those entry courts and how they're all connected, and then we do have the slopes. Here's that exhibit, kind of blows these, these amenities up, but here's the central amenity, where we are thinking that there would be a pool, and a spa, and decking, and barbecues, and shade structures. There would be an area for, as, as a play area, whether it be turf or astroturf, or, you know, we're very cognizant, you know, Rob is very cognizant, our landscape architect, about drought tolerance, so you, we wouldn't do anything that'd be foolish. But we would love to have some of your input on that. And then we have this, these areas, both at the, and there's kind of like a barbell. So we have this centralized heart of the community, and then we have activity here, we have an opportunity for activity here, and we have an activity across the street from the rec, from the centralized rec. So we're kind of excited about that, and you notice there's, there's programming for the central one, but we've kind of left the other ones blank, because we're trying to figure out what could be. Dog park, bocce ball, open area, you name it. Parking, again, Oscar wasn't kidding when he said how difficult parking becomes when you're doing the site plan, and we've got this long linear site, and the minute you start adding all these parking spaces, it does become a challenge. But we, we feel good about it. We've provided 417 spaces, and they come in the form of two-car, side-by-side garages with direct access. So these are all for sale homes, this isn't anything rental. Two-car garages, side-by-side, direct access for each of the homes. Then we have opportunities for eight driveways, it's kind of site-specific, and these homes that with a little red dot have a driveway. We have 132 head-in spaces that are equally distributed throughout the community, which we feel good about that, because proximity to your parking, I think, is important. And this is really guest parking we're talking about. And then there's a few parallel, there's a few parallel spaces that are tucked in here. So we, we hope you're happy with that, because we feel really good about it. Now I'm going to turn it over to Jeff. He's the expert to talk about the architecture, and then we're almost done. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Chelwick. I'm senior principal at William Hesmullish Architects, working on the architecture for the project, along with Denise. We sort of work hand-in-hand on it. Obviously, pretty straightforward. We have an inspiration coming from the Delphi House, Mediterranean, Spanish eclectic design style. We wanted to use that as the inspiration for the overall design statement on the project itself, to create a timeless and sort of traditional statement. When we have townhomes in a row, it's important for us as designers to avoid a long expensive roof, long expanse of roof. And so what we did on this elevation in front of you here is we went a side-to-side framing on the left side, which gives a nice two-story edge, and also a softer condition to the bluff edge and the adjacent neighbor, adjacent street. In the middle of the building, we set, we designed the plans and coordinating with the elevations and put, set it back, so we have that break in the middle of the building to create that offset. And then on the right side is the side is the three-story element of the townhomes itself in this project. It gives an overall one, two, and three-story massing changes from horizontal to vertical also. What's also very important is the bluff-edge. And so what we did was, we're proposing two different alternative design styles on the end of the elevation of each one of the buildings. Obviously, it's the same unit, but we want variety, so we're doing two different alternatives. At the same time, what we're looking at is doing a connection between those two different alternative elevations to provide an overall larger design statement. So you have a mass, a bigger mass, and a smaller mass. So we're giving that variety as we go along. This is sort of, our proposal is sort of in the statement up there on the top in the site plan, showing how we're doing the alternative elevations around the edge itself. While the elevations show the overall design statement, massing, concept to the elevations, it's important to show the blow-up details. We feel that's important, to show that level of detail that we're going into the elevations, and also the quality of what we're proposing in this regard. So these floor blow-up elevations show pop-out can levers, the bay windows we're proposing, decorative corbels, decorative deck details, decorative railings, and awnings, and things like that that are shown. And it's throughout the elevations, not just one side, all four sides. The last two blow-ups show how the massing changes go. There's a play of massing, and there's an asymmetry involved, and that's part of the design style, but also inherent in what we're proposing to you today. The additional details of potshelves and the nice tile surround emphasizing some of the front doors is, hearkens back to the Delpi House also. Lastly, from color and materials, we're proposing again, we would like to have an overall consistent design theme throughout the project to create that sense of neighborhood. But within that, we want variety, so we're showing three different alternative color blocking at this point. And again, we would like your feedback on that also. I'm here for any questions, and Oscar to wrap up. Thank you.
Just to wrap up, I guess one of the last features of the project is, again, kind of commemorating history. It'll always be Delpi's Corner, so we're preserving that name, obviously, with the name on clay, the Delpi's Corner. You heard about how we're proposing architecture that's going to, in a small way, commemorate that history, and hopefully the descendants of the Delpies appreciate that. There's a reservoir on the southwest corner that we're going to avoid. That was associated with some of the agricultural uses of the past. That'll be avoided. One idea that I had was to take some of the existing rocks from the foundations and retaining walls that you can still see there today, and it's kind of a sustainable thing to do, to try to reuse materials. So we're going to try to incorporate that into the landscape as feasible. We're going to get a historic landmark plaque on the corner, working with the Historic Society to do that. And I mentioned my art project. I'm still digging into that a little bit, and when we finally come back before you with, you know, an action, I'd love to have something to really wow you with. And that's it for our presentation. We'd love to field any questions from you at this time.
Before we begin making comments from the commissioners and asking questions, I don't have, right now, any speaker slips from anyone in the public, so if you'd like to fill out a speaker slip and bring it up to Ms. Turley, we'd be more than happy to, you know, have your questions, excuse me, questions and comments as well. Okay. Commissioners, I think we'll start, we'll use our regular format that we've been using for design reviews. And first thing that we'd like are any of our questions that we have for the applicant regarding the site design. Does anyone have comment on the site design? Commissioner Rossler.
Oscar and Denise, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name on the site design. One of the things that I appreciated, although I didn't quite understand how the live-work units were going to work, it did step up the hillside. There were two levels within, and my concern with the design of your project, as you showed in the cross-section, you're creating a big pad in the middle of the site. Did you consider splitting the pad up, and stepping it up, and rotating the buildings so that people, the residents, got views out over the valley?
Thank you. Well, two things. We like the fact that these units, these homes, can be separated from busy East Vista Way. We think that makes sense from a residential standpoint. We did look at orientation of these homes to face, but we thought lesser of the view from the residents and more from the public view. And we felt that it was more important. These are splain, it's ever so slightly, but you can actually be in those homes and be able to view down the entry court out to the valley. So we feel, we feel good about that. I think it's more important for you to like this project from the outside, because we feel like these homes are going to be gorgeous as they are, and we're creating this sense, this enclave on its own, that has all these amenities that people are going to want to be at, that that's more important. I mean, that's what I would say.
And if I could add to that, the previous specific plan proposed to grade the entire site. What's not terribly clear on this site plan is that we're avoiding 2.3 acres on the southwest corner to preserve and avoid those rocks, which are significant resources. So we don't have the benefit of putting our access point way down on East Vista Way. It's actually a blind turn. It would be a safety issue, which really constrains us, and that is a bit of a pinch point right there. The other thing is, by rotating buildings, you introduce a lot more mass. So I guess, you know, you're juggling priorities here. Are our residents' views more important than the public's experience as they drive by this site? I would say no. The other interface we've been really trying to honor are the rear neighbors. So all along our back property line, I've met with and talked with all of our neighbors, and they're really interested in preserving their view. So we want to keep our site down. If you wanted a terrace, our rear row of units would be much taller and presumably block their views. So they're much higher. They're about 50 feet in pad elevations, it's 35-foot product. They've got 15 feet, if they're five feet tall, 20 feet down. We've oriented the buildings in a very porous way, so not only are they looking over, but through. So tried to kind of balance a lot of conflicting goals in this approach, but I do, we did look at that, and I appreciate the comment.
All right. One comment for you, and probably on the tentative map when you submit that, showing the property to the south would be important. I know you have to do that. But also, as Commissioner Garrison was talking about, or Carol, I don't remember which one did, but go down to, go show the improvements down to Oak, at least on one exhibit, so we can see how all the driveways across the street interface with the project.
Yes, sir, and we will definitely do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Garrettson, please.
I just want to comment on, you know, the homework you've done, and the changes that you've made. I think it makes it much easier for the neighbors to accept this, and it makes it a lot easier for us to move forward. I appreciate what you've done so far. I look forward to seeing, you know, more finalized designs as we move forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
Regarding the grading, I think you, I like the single pad, because you have taken the mass away from the street view. You are getting, giving, or maintaining the residents that are on the ridge that view line. I think that's a positive thing. The building mass, I think, is positive, where you're putting those two-story elements along that front slope, and three-story in the back. Question for you, on the open space, it was mentioned a couple of times that you're providing double the open space. But of that square footage of open space, how much of that is sloped? Because--
None. Can I go back to my presentation, please, Mike? So on our open space slide, you're going to see two shades of green. The dark green is what we're considering common open space. And actually, you have a requirement, I think, in your development code, where you have to have a minimum dimension of, I think, 30 feet, or something like that. Our bluff-top trail isn't wide enough. It doesn't qualify. But I actually think it's going to be one of the most highest-used recreational amenities on the project, so laser pointer. These dark green areas on the corners and in the center constitute 2.63 acres, and the other stuff is slope and landscaping and does not count towards our open space requirement.
Okay, great. That was all for now. Thanks.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say that I like this site layout, and I agree with what the applicant is kind of putting out there, is that we had to choose in this site. There's why we typically wouldn't, wouldn't like to have a massive cut, large pad, and then fill. The other choice is to block the views of the neighbors and to push farther up against Foothill Drive and East Vista Way, probably, in order to get that vertical grade difference between these sites and through the parking area. And also, to pick up this parking, you can't, you can't really be doing that near as easily on a terrorist site. So that's another compromise that I think makes the project better, is having the ability to provide that parking that it needs. And situating the, so that, you know, if they would have turned the buildings the other direction along Foothill and East Vista Way, the first thing out of our mouths would have been the massing that we are seeing from the street, right? So this is, this is great for the people from down below.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Jackal.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that this is a much softer approach to the site, and the buildings, and the neighborhood. So I appreciate that you've done that. And I also very much like the pedestrian link down to the corner that you have put there. That's a nice recognition that people need to be able to get there. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I totally agree with Commissioner Jackal's comments. I do have a question regarding the Z-way to get down there. Is there, is it a locked gate at the bottom as well?
I guess it would have to be, yeah. We're trying to do a gated community.
It may be at the top.
Okay.
We're in the process of kind of designing that. We know there'll have to be a gate because this is a gated community. It may want to be at the top. Maybe someone wants to work out and run those steps. I'm not really sure. But we'll have to talk, because it'll be part of the property. It may have to be down at the bottom, but--
Do you have any preference or insights on where it might?
No, it's very nice. It's a very nice project. Nice changes. So I appreciate that. Commissioners, questions, comments regarding the architecture? Appears none. How about parking and traffic? Oh, Commissioner Jackal.
Okay. I, again, I like the architecture very much, with the possible exception of the B-plan left elevation, which seems--
I'm sorry, could you repeat yourself? I couldn't hear you. Which--
I'm sorry. The Plan B, the D-plan, the left elevation.
I think I have it. One sec.
There. No, that's not it yet.
Bottom left, no?
On this, it's the bottom right.
Bottom right.
And somehow, that elevation just seems more blank to me than the other elevations.
Good comment, yeah.
I can see my architect taking furious notes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Looney.
You're to be complimented on the architecture. You created some articulation. You've done, I think, a great job at some three-story structures to where there's enough interest in the play of space, the play of mass. I think the architecture is appropriate. I think it works well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jackal.
Sorry. I like very much that you have proposed so many places for the trash to be put and collected. However, the one at the far left, I'm wondering, is the trash truck going to have to back in and then pull out? How does the truck get there?
Probably, yeah. You're right. Is it the one that's going to be right there?
Yes, uh-huh, that one. That was--
Yeah, let us, let us look at that. We might be able to find a better home for that one. You're right, it's a little bit less convenient from an operational standpoint.
Otherwise, great.
Any other comments, commissioners? Commissioner Carroll?
I would just say in regards to traffic, that I think, I think we're missing out on an opportunity to take some traffic off the intersection of Foothill Drive and East Vista Way. I know this has been talked about and discussed at the staff level, but even if it's a right turn into the project off East Vista Way, it's just, it's just that much less traffic out of the intersection, and I just can't see, I just can't see a negative to it, from my point of view.
Commissioner Garrettson, please.
The emergency exit, will the residents be able to exit the property walking down that? That emergency exit. If I'm a resident, and I want to get down Vista Way, can I walk down that and--
Yeah, I think--
Have to go all the way around, or?
I would think so. I don't think it would qualify for like an ADA access, because it's fairly steep. But yeah, I think there's an opportunity to have a pedestrian access point there.
I think that would be good, because right now, you have two, two chances to walk out of this. One is the driveway, and one is the long stairs or the ramp. So if you had access to exit by walking down that, it could really enhance the residents' opportunities.
That's a good point. Thank you.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
I would just second Commissioner Carroll's comments about the, having a right turn in, right turn out on East Vista Way. We're going to be really interested to see what your traffic study shows and how that intersection works. I'm looking forward, as a resident of that neighborhood, to having those improvements put in, so the streets widened, and there's sidewalks. So, I mean, that's going to be a great benefit. But I'm really concerned about how the intersection, the school, the shopping center are all going to function. So I'd like you to take another look at doing a right turn in, right turn out on East Vista Way.
Okay.
Commissioner Looney, please.
This is a question for traffic, and somewhat for site design. As we come onto the property, we've got 137 homes or so, you might want to, I see the entrance into the property and into these homes as being somewhat understated. I think it would be an opportunity for you to see if you could celebrate that entrance a little bit more than what I know that you're in schematics, site design, but one of the things that Vista's trying to achieve in the new developments is somewhat, somewhat of a landmark, or some monuments, to where we're celebrating that entrance into this area, because it is a predominant piece of property. But that's just a comment. If that could be enhanced, I think you'd end up with a better project as well.
Could I ask, are you thinking like some monumentation? Is it just landscaping? Or just all of it?
We come in, we turn to the, you know, we curve to the right. I think it could be celebrated more so than what it's shown.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Landscape and amenities? Commissioner Garrettson, please.
Yeah, one of the things that I would suggest, you've talked to the Arts Commission. One of the things you might want to consider is talking to the Parks and Rec Commission about what they would suggest, because I know that they have kind of an overall plan of, you know, what they'd like to see in certain areas. And obviously, a basketball court would be too noisy, and I'm not suggesting that, but that would be the type thing that I'd be talking about. The schools, for the most part, have increased security over the last four-- The schools, for the most part, have increased security over the last four, five years, and they've blocked off a lot of the basketball courts and a lot of the playgrounds and that sort of thing. So the neighbors have less access to that. So you might want to check with the Parks and Rec Commission to find out what suggestions they might have. I'm not sure what that would be. I served 12 years on the commission, but you may want to check with them to find out what they would suggest for that area. And I know it's only for residents, but still.
Certainly, we'll do that. Thank you.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
Your plans call for three- and four-bedroom units, so I would imagine there's going to be a lot of families living here. So I'm going to be interested in your landscaping plan and recreation amenities to address kids. If it's a tot lot, I like the mini park idea where you've got at least a field to go kick the soccer ball or throw a baseball around. I appreciate that. And then, of course, adult amenities with a pool and spa, I think are beneficial. So I'm impressed with the plan so far, but I would encourage you to pay some attention to family and kids in your project.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Looney.
Again, we've got a very conceptual landscape plan that we're looking at, but you've given us some color, you've given us some concepts to look at. One of the things, as we have the graded slopes, it's always a challenge to plant those appropriately. And you're probably going to find a lot of granite on those cut slopes, so that makes it even more of a challenge. I think maybe to offset that, because the granite slopes are going to be in the back, if in that landscape plan, you could introduce maybe some tall specimen trees that are going to begin to visually reduce the height of those two-story structures. And I think in one area, we've got a three-story structure that's off of Vista Way, but I think that would be advantageous. And then more of the landscaping within the interior of a property. On Buildings 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6, 7, we've got 16 feet between these structures that are 30-some feet in height. They're 36 feet in height. If we measured to the eve height, we're still looking at about 27, 28, 29 feet, depending upon the elevation. With 16 feet between these structures of that height, I think you're going to have somewhat of a challenge to deal with landscaping. It would be nice to see a greater distance between some of those buildings. That may mean the density is lessened. But from the floor to the ceiling, we've got 26 feet approximately. So if we only have 16 feet and that height, I don't want these corridors with landscaping to become even taller. So I think that plays, the landscaping plays into the massing and the density between these structures.
Commissioner Carroll, please.
Thank you, Chairman. This area that's south of the emergency access road, is that being dedicated as open space?
We were thinking a conservation easement. If we were to dedicate it as open space, I think it would have... Actually, I'm not sure. I don't necessarily have a preference so long as my density is measured. And I don't trip myself up on density, but if you wanted open space, you could probably do that, too.
Just asking. And, but it would remain... It would be maintained by the HOA?
Yes, and we have to go through two tribal consultations as a part of our process, one on behalf of SB 18 and another one on AB 52. And so a lot of the details as to what happens down there is going to kind of be flushed out agency to agency. So I'm just as curious as you are as to what comes out of that.
Okay, yeah, and if... Be interested to know if, how it would be fenced off? Is it accessible, pedestrian accessible, or completely barricaded, or that kind of scenario?
Yeah, I can tell you, my preference would be to take some of our export and cap the site. We've had a lot of history of graffiti on those rocks. They're beautiful to look at and they're a focal point, but at the same time, they do come with cost to maintain and keep people out and kind of manage. My preference would be to cap it, wouldn't have so much export on the site, but again, it's going to come out of the conversations with the tribe. I did meet with them out there in the field once, and they said that there are ways of kind of landscaping with like prickly pear or bougainvilleas or something, kind of natural fencing to try to discourage people from getting on the rocks. But we've had fencing and people just climb it. I don't know.
Yeah, well, I can see that you'd want to... Yeah, capping it's going to actually preserve it better than just leaving it there to be graffiti. It's a real shame.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious on that. We'll see what you bring forward on that.
And before we go forward with our general comments, we do have a speaker slip. So Steve Cook, if you'd like to come on up, please, and give us your comments and concerns, opinions about building orientations and architecture.
Well, thank you very much for allowing me to voice my appreciation or concerns or whatever they might be. Real quickly, as far as the site goes, I like that they've graded it as a single pad also. I like that they've sighted the buildings so that the... I live up on the top of the hill, so I'm looking to the north right there, and I like that they've sighted the buildings vertically. There's got to be some kind of room in between that you can see through, which also opens it up for all the residents on that, you know, on that site in the backside to look through the front also, even though there is a slight grade difference there, too. So I'm liking it. I've seen three different studies on this site, so this is pretty nice. Anyway, I think they did a good job on that. I was going to ask a question relative to the open space. Will there be structures on that open space? So that's just something I'm interested in because if there's like, you know, a two-story pool room on open space, I just don't understand the term maybe well enough. So if we can keep the open space open, for views at least, for us up on the top, that would be nice, too. Pool's nice, dog runs are nice, you know, a basketball court, anything you can see through like that from up above. And it seems like they're planning for that, so I like that, too. They've put a lot of thought into that sighting, especially, I think, being sensitive to us, the neighbors. As far as the architecture goes, I couldn't say it better than Commissioner Looney did. I think that they did a really good job on massing, and when you think of three-story units, I just, you know, it's so easy to think that it's just going to be a three-story block that you just drop from a helicopter and there it goes. And I didn't see that at all in these preliminary drawings, so I know this is really early, but I was impressed. Looks like it would be nice for the neighborhood also there, too. One other thing with reference to our views is the landscape, and I know there was a comment also from Commissioner Looney about the tall trees. I, like him, have a concern for the elevations of the buildings. I think that it's important that we get some relief to the buildings' edges, which I don't see that many edges, so I really like the architecture, but some building relief would be nice. I think that's sometimes difficult in tight areas. You end up deforming the trees, but they have a really good landscape architect on the project, so I think Rob and his staff are going to do a good job in tree selection. One other thing relative to the landscape is I'd like to see if we can... Right now, I can't say that there's any landscape out there or habitat or what have you. I know it's all non-native grassland right now. But it would be nice in maybe to, maybe the top slope up there could be going to California natives. Temporary irrigation system, let's get them established. Keep the water use low and provide habitat for some of the local critters that could use that. As far as tall trees on the slopes go, I think that, you know, it's okay to have relief there, too. But I think that we just need to create, stick with some open viewports, which we've had in some earlier, in the earlier plans, where we provide view triangles or such to allow for the existing residents to maintain some views. Again, there's lots of different plants that Rob could choose from to make sure that we keep that open space and the clustering and over here and just leave open lower plants here. So I'm confident that they'll do good there. So I'm just speaking for myself. I haven't spoken with any of the other neighbors yet, but I really, I like this first concept that's come through.
Good. Thank you very much. Student Commissioner Acevedo, are any comments from you this evening? Okay. With that, commissioners, are there any other comments that we'd like to make? To Mr. Uranga, have we given you the information that you need? Have we been clear on what we are looking for?
I think so, yes. Thank you. And thanks to all of you planning commissioners for all your input and taking the time to review the plans.
Okay.
If I could just make one quick comment?
Oh, please.
The old specific plan that we're amending had defined view corridors that were intended to preserve the views of the rear neighbors. We intend to preserve those, and it had areas designated where you couldn't plant large trees specifically for that purpose. We were thinking of preserving those old corridors. Just a side note and a detail, but I think it's relevant here.
Okay. Commissioner Rossler, last comments, please.
Yes. Thank you. Well done. Thank you for appreciating the city's history, and thank you for being sensitive to the neighbors. Your meetings must have gone well because nobody's here. So, anyway, and I think this is a new process for us doing this early review, and I think this is the best response that we've had so far in coming back with a better project. So, thank you. Well done.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for listening to all of us. So, any other commissioner comments? Mr. Rossler, anything from you or everything's good? All right? Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
While we're setting up for the second item, if the students want to bring your papers up, we'll take care of you.
Okay, Mr. Connelly, are you ready?
Yes, thank you. This is a public hearing for sign code amendment for Chapter 12.20 of the municipal code and 12.5, I'm sorry, 18.52 of the development code. In January of last year, the city council directed staff to initially reduce the timeframe for which election signs could be posted after an election before they had to be removed. The current allowance is for 30 days before an election and 10 days after an election the signs can be up. The council wanted to direct staff to take them down five days earlier so that they could only be up five days after an election rather than 10. And in having that conversation, the decision was made to shift the whole time period five days, so it can be up for 35 and down within five under the proposed changes. Other than that, there are no changes to the sign code. This only relates to signs during an election period that fit within certain classifications, and so it's pretty limited in its scope. So based on the council's direction we received last year, we're recommending those changes, and that completes my staff presentation. Thank you.
Commissioner Rossler, please.
John, does Chapter 12.2 of the municipal code allow the signs in the public right-of-way?
Yes.
That really gives me a lot of heartburn. Can you review the history of that for us? Why the city made the decision to allow signs in the public right-of-way? Mr. Stone was going to...
Yes, I believe it's been historic practice. They're not allowed in all areas of the right-of-way. For instance, central medians, they can't be placed there. They can't be placed in a manner in which creates a hazard to site distance for turns. In addition, it requires the approval of the property owner, who, assuming there is a property owner, but often, for instance, if there's a, you know, parkway in front of your home, only you have the right to place the sign on that parkway unless you give permission to somebody to do so. So it's, you know, recognize that a proliferation of signs can degrade the aesthetic appeal of the neighborhood, but at the same time, you know, there's been a recognition that there's a value to allowing for some of that communicative, expressive options for the public, and so it's been a balance.
Has there been any thought given to limiting the number of signs or the distance between signs or number of signs per block? I'm glad, my concern initially went to public safety and blocking site distance coming out of driveways and streets, and you've explained that that's taken into consideration, so that addresses one of my concerns. But there, I think the section of the ordinance has been abused in the last several elections, and I just, I'm uncomfortable about that and would like to see additional limitations put on it. So, anyway, my thoughts tonight, so...
Commissioner Garrettson, please.
Just a clarification. This is to apply to both city property and private property?
Yes.
So the city is basically limiting what homeowners can place on their property and for how long?
There only, we're only, this only affects signs during election periods, so there are certain classification of signs that fit within that allowance of an election period, which is 35 days before the election and five days after another of the proposed ordinance.
Does that mean only the election for which that person is running?
No, it's simply any type of sign that's posted within that time period. So we're affecting the time periods, but the signs during election periods don't, we don't regulate the content of the sign. We only regulate how large the signs can be, how high they can be, and where they're placed.
So if I'm a candidate and I'm running for an office and the election is November and there's a primary election or something in June, I can put signs up in June?
If they're on private property and they fall within the residential sign code parameters, yes. I think it's four square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
So signs placed now in my own... So signs placed now in my own private yard are basically illegal?
No.
No.
You can place a sign in your own front yard as long as it's four square feet or less, any time of the year, and it can say whatever message you want it to say.
Debbie Kramer for Water District.
Mother of the Year.
Correct.
I can put that in my yard now?
And so the political signs, I'm sorry?
I can put that in my yard now?
Yes. And so a lot of the political signs that you've probably seen around town on private property right now
Mm-hmm.
fit within that four-square-foot allowance, and so they just are residential signs. Within the election period, that allowance increases to a larger-size sign, and signs are allowed in the right-of-way, which they're otherwise not allowed.
And then they can put them more places within the city.
Mr. Stone's gonna correct.
No, no, you got it right. The only thing I would add is that during non-election periods, one sign of four square feet would be allowed, so you would not have the option of putting up 10 signs.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Carroll, please.
How do you determine which code enforcement officer has to go tell the council member that their sign is still up and they need to get it down? I'm just, I'm just playing around.
Commissioner Garretson, please.
I would assume that's gonna be one of the three new ones they're gonna hire, the ones without a lot of tenure. So you can place on private land anytime an election sign?
Within a residential zone.
In a residential area. This does not supersede homeowners association rules and regulation. That's totally different.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
So I can put up the one sign on my yard for Mother of the Year that falls with, but I can't have two signs on my property?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Carroll?
Thank you. I forgot to make the motion to approve this resolution as written after my hilarious joke.
We have a motion? We have a second? Please vote. Please note that the motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Rossler voting no and Commissioner Fleming abstaining. Okay. Let's see, back to our agenda. Commission staff discussion, council action, and reports.
So we have a dinner tomorrow night with the City Council. Hope to see you all there at 6:30 at Shadow Ridge.
Okay.
The Council is having a goal-setting meeting on March 1st and a budget meeting on March 15th, which are regularly scheduled planning commission dates in March, so we're not going to have a meeting in March. Our next meeting will be April 5th.
Okay.
And we'll keep you posted on, so enjoy your March. Paso Santo Faye update. We're getting closer to opening both ways on the street. We're hoping to get that done by this week, so the traffic can actually travel in both directions for the first time in several months, and the contractor will be finishing up the arch and the landscaping and the trees and all the pedestrian amenities over the next couple of months. We're hoping that the project will be completely wrapped by the end of March. We have funded the design construction plans for Phase 2, and we have set aside money for that, so we do expect to start construction on the next phase sometime next year, which will go from Ocean View down to Past Terrace and include another roundabout, Equahomi. So that's exciting. And then the last thing I had is the skate park is gonna start construction hopefully next month. We've kicked off with the consultant, and they should be out doing some site preparatory work in the next few weeks, and grading will start in March, so you'll see some activity on those properties. It's on North Santa Fe, at the corner of Orange Avenue, which is across the street from the little car wash there, at the corner just north of where the transit center is. And then a couple, about another block up on the left-hand side, 410, I believe it is, North Santa Fe, there's two sites, both on the west side of the street. There's signs posted on the properties right now. Yeah, there are a lot, a lot going on.
Commissioner Rossler?
John, up on East Fifth Way, just north of where the 99 Cent store is, there was an old gas station that was an auto repair place, and it's recently been improved. The garage doors are gone, walls have been up, front door repainted. Can you tell me what's going in there?
Yeah, it's an auto loan business that did TIs to create office space. Just note, though, that the painting of yellow and red on the roof was not approved colors by the city, and we are working to have it repainted before we sign all the building permits, so.
Very good.
Got a few complaints about that.
Adaptive reuses of old gas stations is really difficult. You know, we've got several in town, so good for them for at least taking the project on, so.
Commissioner Jackal?
Thank you. At the last, I guess it was council meeting, there was a discussion about the Avalon Apartments charging its residents for onsite parking spaces. And do you know more about that?
Yeah, Patsy's done a bunch of research on that. She can probably give you the rundown.
So staff contacted management at Avalon, and what happens is that the particular configuration, one bedroom, two bedrooms, they'll get the specified number of spaces that are allocated to them, but if the resident, the tenant decides that they need an extra space, that's when they start charging for the above and beyond what they normally would get. And depending whether it's a carport or garage, there's different pricing associated with that, which is in the order, if I remember correctly, about 30 or 40 bucks per month for that one particular space. But again, only above and beyond.
Okay, that's certainly having an impact on the streets and neighborhoods.
We're a little suspicious that that's all Avalon, actually, so when we come back and talk to the Council and the Planning Commission on our parking update, I think we're gonna have a little bit more data to back that up.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
Commissioner Looney?
John, a couple of months ago, I asked about a burned building on Santa Fe. Insurance companies don't take that long, and it just real unsightly.
We've actually gotten a couple complaints from council members about that as well, and so we're trying to work with the property owner to demolish, you know, the burnt parts of the building at minimum before they can rebuild, but we just have not had a lot of participation from the property owner at this point, so.
Does the fire department not have any jurisdiction over a burned structure?
This is a burned-out building, just in terms of getting a nuisance finding and getting them to tear the building down. I mean, that would, we're still in the code enforcement phase, but the next phase would be going to enforcement action, and Mr. Stone can comment on what the process would be?
There is, there are different ways to do it. One way is what's called an administrative nuisance abatement process, and that takes a little bit of time and requires hearings. Another way is depending upon the condition, I'm not especially familiar with it, is there might be other actions aside from nuisance abatement. There's also administrative citations, and so we can, you know, continue to look at that and see what options might be best suited to the circumstances.
Commissioner Garretson?
Just a clarification on the Avalon parking. Did, Mr. Connolly, did you say you're going to expand on that whole parking issue over there at some future date?
We are going to come back to the Commission and the Council with a summary of what we heard from the community and the various, you know, meetings that we had, and then some recommendations on how to address the topical issues that we've sort of categorized them in. Parking on the street and enforcement thereof is one of the categories. It's really outside the scope of what we intended to do, which was update our parking code, but because it's become up as such an issue in that area, we really need to address it. So we'll have some data of what we collected with respect to the parking requirements for those projects, how they manage the newer projects that actually have parking management, what the perceived problems are with parking on the street, and what the potential solutions are. It's a little unusual, because most of the time when you are limiting parking on the street, it's because you have an outside element that's coming into an area in parking, like a university or some special event, and you wanna preserve the parking for the people that live there. This is a situation where we're enforcing the parking against the people who live there, and we're not really sure what the benefit of doing that is. There is a supply and demand issue there, as our consultant noted, so I think that needs to be vetted a little bit better in terms of how is it really gonna affect the whole community before we go down that road, but we're gonna bring that issue back and have a more thorough discussion of it before we take any action.
And a follow-up on the council meeting about parking. I wasn't able to stay for the whole thing, so was there anything significant that came out of that? Changes that we need to be aware of, or, you know, documents that we can look at that would bring us up to date?
Like I said, we'll be bringing back a summary of what was discussed and what we're recommending, but in short, it was look at the parking issues with respect to the specific neighborhoods around Breeze Hill and the on-street parking. Consider increasing the parking requirements for mixed-use zones or areas where there's lower-than-city-wide standards, particularly for residential-only projects. Those were probably the biggies. The rest of it was, you know, we're gonna look at our commercial standards again and try to create more flexibility and economy of space so that we can maybe use some of these underutilized centers.
Commissioner Looney?
Another question, John, on parking policies. In previous meetings, we've talked about mixed-use and the parking requirements for mixed-use, but yet when they're 100% residential, does that require City Council approval, or is that something that can be done at the planning level, where if it's on mixed-use, but they have 100% housing, is there any policy that has to be changed before the planning department requires that housing parking to be changed?
Yes. So if we need to, in the mixed-use zone, there's a parking requirement for residential, so no matter what's built there, if it's residential, it only has to comply with those parking requirements. Those requirements are lower than what our citywide multifamily standards are. The concern has been that we need to increase those or at least balance them out, so we're gonna look at that issue and get some recommendations from our consultant about what we should do, but that would be included in any recommended zoning code change that we bring forward as part of the parking update. The other thing to mention is the Council, specifically Councilmember Rigby, scheduled a discussion item on the next council meeting, which is the 23rd, next Tuesday, on the mixed-use zone, and that's one of her concerns, is we're getting a lot of residential-only projects in mixed-use zones, not mixed-use, and should we be providing breaks in the residential development standards like parking and landscaping and open space for those projects, or should we be looking at them differently if they're residential-only? So they're gonna have that discussion, and then I can report back at our next meeting.
So as an applicant, if I make application for 100% housing in a mixed-use zone piece of property, can the planning, can planning require an additional number of spaces that go beyond city policy?
No.
Was that no?
No. Not legally.
Okay. That's all.
Commissioner can recommend it?
No, I mean, we can certainly recommend it. We can ask them to do it. We can tell them we won't support their project without it, but in the end, you know, they have a right to provide the parking that's allowed under the zoning, and we can't require that they add more than what's in the zoning code.
Are there any?
The only, I'm sorry, the only stipulation there would be is if it's a general plan or zone change where they're asking for a legislative change and not just a site plan approval. In those situations, we have a lot more discretion. If it's just a site development plan or a normal type of a development review that would come to you, special use permit, wouldn't necessarily have that discretion.
Kind of along the same lines as parking, is it permissible to request an applicant to put story polls up for a particular building?
No, that's a good question. We've been asked that question a couple times, and we actually got that question about this development. We have no requirement for story polls in our code right now. If it's something that the Council or the Planning Commission is interested in, those concerns should be expressed to the City Council. That would be a policy change. We would have to put it either under our zoning code or some kind of a planning, you know, commission policy, or I guess it would be a City Council policy that would provide the requirement or the directive to developers to do it so that we could say, oh, it says in the code, you have to do it right here. We can't just say, oh, well, you know what, we really want you to put up story polls. Some of them might agree, but not all of them, and the ones that don't agree, you can't point to anywhere in the code that it says that. You can't really enforce it. So we'd have to go in and make some zoning code changes if we wanna do that. That's probably a good topic of conversation for tomorrow night's dinner if the Commissioners wanna bring it up, in terms of what you're looking for in the way of policy changes and see if there's support there.
I know that if story, if one building was story polled across the drive from Frasier's, this place would have been packed. It's just, that's, I think, one of the best public notice items that could be done without the mailing and without email. It's just, and I think it's gonna give the residents of the city a much better perspective of some of the proposed structures, but it would sure be nice to see what could be done on that.
Has there been any new leases, you know, California Pizza Kitchen, Famous Dave, Subway, El Cajon?
The CPK is gonna be a pizza place, Rosati's, which is like a Chicago pizza place and a, I think, pizza and beer. That's the only one that I'm aware of, unless you know of anything else. No, Patsy's saying.
That's it, huh? Okay. I see no more lights?
All right.
We're adjourned?
Thank you.
See you tomorrow night.